Let's go ahead and get the meetings. I'm going to call the meeting to order. City of Lawrence Common Council. Today is January 3rd, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. It's now 6:32 PM, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow our heads. Father, bless all of our endeavors, especially today's meeting. Guide us in our discussion, enlighten our minds in every decision that we make. Give us your grace that we may effectively do our parts as public servants. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Bless our plans, programs, and projects so that we may achieve our objectives. We ask that you watch over our first responders and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. All these we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we have a quorum. All councilors are either present and two joining via Teams, which would be Counselor Rusamorov and myself. The first order of business on the agenda is election of President and Vice President of the Lawrence Common Council. I would like to start by nominating Counselor Tyrell Giles for President of the Council. Nominations are now open. Are there any other nominations for President of the Lawrence Common Council?
Yes, Madam President, this is Counselor Russell. I would like to nominate Counselor Chevlat.
Okay, so we have two nominations so far. There are any more? Okay, so Counselor Giles and Counselor Chevlat have been nominated. Nominations are now closed. We will need to take a roll call vote since we have two councilors attending via Teams. So I'm going to start with myself, Counselor Chavis. We're going to vote first for the first nomination, which was Counselor Giles. Okay? So Counselor Chavis voting yes for Counselor Giles. Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
For Giles.
For Counselor Giles. This vote is for Counselor Giles. Yes, it's either a yes or a no. Counselor Whitfield? Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Dinning?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Counselor Giles.
So yes for Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
No.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat? Did I get everyone? Okay, seven for Counselor Giles, two. I'm going to go ahead and run the vote for Counselor Chevlat. I don't know if that's... Do you think that's appropriate, Kathy, or do we just go seven-two? Seven for Counselor Giles, two for Counselor Chevlat. Counselor Giles has it? Okay. Congratulations, Counselor Giles. As soon as we finish or start and finish the Vice President position, then I would love for you to take over the agenda.
Thank you.
Next, I'm opening nominations for Vice President of the Council.
Counselor Chavis, I would like to nominate... I would like to nominate Counselor Wells for Vice President.
Okay, I have a nomination for Counselor Wells. Any other nominations?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Lauren Russell.
Okay, so we have Counselor Wells, Counselor Russell. Any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed for Vice President. Counselor Wells was nominated first, so I'll start with him. Counselor Rusamorov? Counselor Freeman?
Yes, for Wells.
Counselor Giles?
Yes, for Wells.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, for Wells.
Counselor Dinning?
Yes, for Wells.
Counselor Chavis? Yes, for Counselor Wells. Counselor Wells? Okay, Counselor Wells, congratulations. Seven-two, seven for Counselor Wells, two for Counselor... I'm going to let them cast their vote, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't you think that's appropriate? Counselor Russell?
No.
Counselor Chevlat?
No.
Okay, seven-two, seven for Counselor Wells, two for Counselor Russell. Congratulations, Counselor Wells, Vice President for the City of Lawrence Common Council. Counselor Giles, I will hand the agenda over to you.
Thank you. Thank you to my fellow councilors. I appreciate you guys' vow of confidence. I look forward to leading us through 2023, and hopefully, and we will have a very, very good year. So with that, we'll go ahead and continue on with the meeting and get through this here. So next on the agenda would be approval of minutes.
What's that, comments of council?
Are we at the comments? I'm sorry. Okay, yes, that's right. Comments of the council, comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any? Counselor Whitfield?
Congratulations on Counselor Giles. I would like for us to recognize the year's services for our past President of the Council, Lisa Chavis. I think we need to give her a round of applause for all the work that she has done to keep us focused and on this journey.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll just move right along here on the...
I'm trying to figure out how do we address who's it? Because we've always had Madam President. Is it Sir President, like Mr. President? Like, how does it?
Counselor Giles. Counselor Giles. Hey, you. That's right.
I actually wanted to make a special announcement to the Street Department when we had that kind of mini blizzard that happened. They did a wonderful job keeping our streets clear and for public safety, for keeping us safe during that time, because I know there was a lot of pipes burst and a lot of people that were working out in dangerous conditions. So I just wanted to acknowledge them and their efforts because they really put forth and helped us have a safe holiday, so.
Thank you. Thank you, President. Counselor Dinning?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to also acknowledge, and I'm sure everybody is thankful for them, that the Firefighters Assistance Fund, they gave out a tremendous amount of toys and mailed letters to children throughout the City of Lawrence. So they did a great service to providing smiles and joy to families over the holiday season.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings of December 5th, 2022, December 21st of 2022, special meetings of December 1st, 2022, December 12th of 2022, and December 16th of 2022. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded. I'm going to take a vote. Do we have to roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
Is it a roll call? Okay. All right, Counselor Wells? A roll call vote, starting with you, Counselor Wells. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Myself, Giles, yes. Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Dinning?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Sorry, Maria, if I mess this up. Counselor... I'm sorry, Maria. I can't get it out today.
Rusamorov.
Rusamorov. Counselor Rusamorov, sorry.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Maria.
No problem.
All right, so it's...
Nine-zero.
Nine-zero, so it's approved.
There's no vouchers.
Okay, no vouchers today. And no committees today. No unfinished business today. New business. Today, new business is the first thing on the agenda is consideration of council appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Melissa Howard.
All right, Melissa Howard. Anyone else?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Pamela Anderson.
Pamela Anderson for redevelopment. Any other nominations? Okay. We'll repeat that again. Mrs. Howard?
Melissa Howard.
Melissa Howard? Okay, so we'll just do the vote for her first, or?
They can each... Well, there's two appointments.
Oh, there is two appointments, so they're both... Okay, all right.
So everybody can vote for...
Before we move on, I would like to ask the question, and I don't know if this is appropriate. I'm looking at the committee that we've had. Has anyone reached out to see if Cheryl Sullivan still wanted to?
Yes, she does. I've talked to her.
Okay, so then we need to nominate her also.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Would you like for me to nominate her? I would like to nominate Cheryl Sullivan, please.
All right. Nomination. Any other nominations? All right.
Sullivan, when you do a roll call, each person would have to vote for two.
Okay. Okay.
The BZA is going to be even trickier because there's three.
There's three, okay. So each person has to vote for two?
For two.
And it has to be a roll call and not written?
Yeah, because we'd get people on...
Right, okay. So this...
So, Mr. President, go ahead and close nominations if there are no more.
If there's no more nominations, we'll close nominations. Thank you. Seeing no more nominations, nominations are closed. Okay, so this vote, we're going to do a roll call vote. We have three people that we are considering. The first is Ms. Melissa Howard. The second...
Pam Anderson.
The second is Pam Anderson, and the third is Cheryl Sullivan. All right, so...
On roll call, everyone list two names...
Okay.
...of their two votes.
So Counselor Wells, your choices are Ms. Howard, Ms. Cheryl Sullivan, and Ms. Pam Anderson. Which of the two would you be voting for?
Could I have a quick question?
Yes, sir.
I heard that Cheryl Sullivan is currently sitting in that position.
Yes.
These other two are, would be newbies?
Melissa Howard's also there.
She's no... She sits there too.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would vote for Melissa Howard and Pam Anderson.
Pam Anderson. All right, next, Ms. Whitfield? Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, I would like to vote for Melissa Howard and Cheryl Sullivan.
Counselor Freeman?
Melissa Howard and Cheryl Sullivan.
Counselor Chavis?
Melissa Howard and Cheryl Sullivan.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Melissa Howard and Cheryl Sullivan.
Myself, Counselor Giles, Melissa Howard and Cheryl Sullivan. Counselor Russell?
Pam Anderson and Cheryl Sullivan.
Cheryl Sullivan. Counselor Dinning?
Melissa Howard and Cheryl Sullivan.
Counselor Chevlat?
Pamela Anderson. Just, that's my only vote.
So the nominees will be... The appointments are Melissa Howard and Cheryl Sullivan.
All right, thank you. So Melissa, congratulations on the reappointment. Thank you for the service to Lawrence. We look forward to the fine work that you're going to do. Thank you again for those folks appointed. Next on the agenda is consideration of council appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do we have any nominations?
Counselor Giles, I would like to nominate...
Mr. President?
Oh, Counselor Dinning just... I'm sorry, Counselor Dinning just went, and then I'll come to you, Counselor Russo.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to nominate three names. James Mousure, Faith Alvarez, and Trace Yates to the BZA.
James Mousure.
James Mousure, Trace Yates.
Faith Alvarez.
Okay.
Counselor Rusamorov?
I would just like the second nomination, as those were my same nominations.
Okay, thank you.
I would also, I would like to nominate Aaron Short.
Aaron Short.
How do you spell Aaron?
A-A-R-O-N.
Short?
All right, so in this situation, we have three spots and four nominations. Three spots and four nominations. And so this will go on a roll call vote similar to what we just did. So I'm going to start... First of all, want to close nominations... Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Whitfield?
So alternate, go separate?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So seeing any more nominations?
Can you repeat what you just said? Three spots and four nominations?
There's three spots available.
Okay.
And four people are nominated. Is there any more nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations at this time. So you're voting for three people when your time comes in the roll call. So again, the nominees are James Mousure, Faith Alvarez, Trace Yates, and Aaron Short. Okay, so everyone has that?
We do.
We'll start with you, Counselor Wells.
Thank you. I would vote for Faith Alvarez, Trace Yates, and James Mousure.
James Mousure, okay. Counselor Whitfield?
I would vote for James Mousure, Faith Alvarez, and Trace Yates.
Counselor Freeman?
Faith Alvarez, James Mousure, and Trace Yates.
Counselor Chavis?
James Mousure, Faith Alvarez, and Trace Yates.
Counselor Rusamorov?
James Mousure, Faith Alvarez, and Trace Yates.
Counselor Giles? James Mousure, Trace Yates, Faith Alvarez. Counselor Russell?
Aaron Short.
Counselor Dinning?
James Mousure, Faith Alvarez, and Trace Yates.
Counselor Chevlat?
Okay, so the appointments go to James Mousure, Faith Alvarez, and Trace Yates.
All right, consideration of council appointments. I'm sorry. Thank you. Congratulations to those folks and their appointments. We appreciate the work that they've done for the City of Lawrence and the work they will be doing in 2023. All right, moving the agenda right along. Consideration of council appointments to the Board... Oh, no. That's the alternate. That is the alternate. Okay. Yep. Consideration of council appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the alternate position. Do we have any open for nominations?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Jennifer Tursey as the alternate.
Jennifer Tursey.
It's T-U-R-S-I.
T-U-R-S-I.
Okay.
All right, anyone else?
I would like to nominate Betty Robinson.
All right. Counselor Betty Robinson?
I would like to nominate Pam... Oh, I'm so sorry. I would like to nominate Pam Anderson and Aaron Short, please.
Okay. Pam Anderson and Short. Do we have any? I'm sorry, did someone up?
Pam Anderson and Aaron Short.
Do we have any other nominations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Sorry.
Yes. Sorry to hear.
Mr. President, if I may, make a nomination, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Rochelle Carey, please.
Can you repeat that name again? Because I didn't hear it very clearly.
She's the...
Rochelle Carey?
Yeah, Rochelle or Shell Carey.
Oh, okay, Rochelle Carey, okay, yes. And she's the alternate.
Mr. Chair, I also can only do one, so I...
Yes, currently.
I put two down. I just want to put Aaron Short down.
Short, would you like to nominate the other person?
No.
No, okay. All right, so really, Short is who she wants to nominate.
Not Pam Anderson.
Yeah, because she's going to do one technically.
Okay.
All right, so...
Give me a second here. Okay, so we have four.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Chavis.
Um, or, I'm sorry, I just don't recall who our alternate is.
Now, currently.
Is there any, is any of the current alternates one of the folks that have been nominated?
Yes, Carey, Rochelle Carey is currently an alternate.
Okay.
And I think, is there two alternates?
Well, the mayor has one.
Oh, the mayor has one, yes. So currently, Ms. Rochelle Carey is our alternate.
Okay, thank you.
There we go, that? All right, all right, so, I'm sorry. So just to make sure everyone's aware of the alternate names, we have one alternate, four nominations. Jennifer Tursey?
Tursey.
Tursey, Ms. Betty Robinson, Mr. Aaron Short, and Ms. Rochelle Carey. We'll start... Okay, we'll change it up this time. This time, we'll start with Counselor Chevlat.
Aaron Short.
Aaron Short. I'm sorry. Counselor Dinning?
Jennifer Tursey.
Short for Chevlat.
Dinning is?
Tursey. Counselor Russell? Oh, God, this is tough. Betty Robinson.
For you.
Counsel... Oh, Counselor Chavis. Counselor Chavis?
Rochelle Carey.
Rochelle Carey. Counselor Rusamorov?
Rochelle Carey, please.
Carey. Counselor Freeman?
Betty Robinson.
Betty Robinson.
Rochelle Carey.
Rochelle Carey. Counselor Wells?
I didn't hear her...
Oh, Rochelle Carey. Vote for?
Rochelle Carey.
Oh, Rochelle Carey? I'll vote for Jennifer Tursey.
Oh, man, that thing is split up a little. Oh, wow. Do we have a...
Wait a minute, there's three.
Oh, it's three. There's two.
So Rochelle Carey.
Rochelle Carey's the winner, but it was tied.
Yeah.
That's funny.
Two, two, two.
Comments of the administration?
Did a good job at that. That was tough.
Do you need to turn that around or the way it is?
I mean, we can do that if it might... Did that do it?
No need to sign all these after for Lisa.
Want to turn it? Yeah, I think...
All right. President Giles, members of the council and members of the Lawrence community who may see this later, thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the administration. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Dave Hoffman, the former Deputy Mayor for the City of Lawrence. We hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season, and we look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Lawrence in a fiscally responsible manner during 2023. During 2022, many strides had been made in the communication between the administration and the council. In fact, numerous members of the council made positive comments regarding the 2023 budget adoption process during the 18 public budget workshops that we held in July and August. However, today I stand totally perplexed by the council's actions at the end of 2022. In 2022, the council spent $20,000 to engage Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors to help guide their financial decisions. At the August 1st Finance Committee meeting, the Baker Tilly advisor introduced the idea of leveraging the wonderful increased net assessed value of our city to keep tax rates at the same level and allow for the issuance of bonds to fund some desperately needed projects. This administration followed the guidance of your financial advisors and identified projects for the parks and the Department of Public Works to make our city a better place to live. These included repaving parking lots at community and veterans parks, achieving ADA compliance in our parks, adding eight additional pickleball courts at Lee Road Park, and adding a garage for protection of our specialty vehicles at our DPW facility on 59th Street. At the November 16th Common Council meeting, the council voted almost unanimously to approve these bonds, eight in favor, one against. But then just two weeks later, at a December 1st special meeting, called with no detailed agenda until about an hour before the meeting started, the council made the decision to remove their support for the general obligations, obligation bonds that would have provided funding for these projects. The reason stated for the repeal was not in direct correlation to the city's bonding ability, nor were they accurate. However, the cities, the citizens of Lawrence and their children will now be punished for the council's actions. In fact, this is the second year in a row that our Parks Department has suffered due to the decisions of this council. Our goal was honorable, to merely bring more of our parks into ADA compliance, make them safer, and more accessible to our disabled citizens. This was a part of the funding denied by this council and now will simply not happen in 2023. As you heard earlier, I referred to myself as former Deputy Mayor. The position of Deputy Mayor in the City of Lawrence was eliminated in December against the mayor's wishes, with no discussion, no public input, and no explanation. And I was told, quote, "Dave, it's nothing personal," end quote. There seems to be a disconnect between the understanding of a salary ordinance and the proposed approved budget. The salary ordinance allows for the titles and positions that can be used legally in our city, while the budget simply provides the funding. Why would the council approve the 2023 budget, which includes this position, and then later abolish the position of Deputy Mayor from the salary ordinance? People ask me all the time, because they know who I am, why did the council take this action in a special meeting just before the onset of an election year? My response, I simply don't know. But the answer should seem obvious to anyone paying attention to current events. The council has stated that they would like open, transparent communication. While working together, as we all know, involves two-way communication. My hope is that in 2023, we can achieve this balance of open communication once again. As an administration, we will continue to work for the betterment of Lawrence for all... citizens. For the past six years, the City of Lawrence has been awarded the Government Finance Officers' Association of the United States and Canada their annual award for distinguished budget presentation. This reflects the professionalism and the transparency of our Controller's office, which has been unjustly criticized by many of you for just the opposite of what we are achieving. One of you even publicly called for the resignation of our Controller on social media and a political website, and yet we continue to maintain a 20% operating reserve and produce nationally-recognized budgets year in and year out, posting all relevant budget documents online every single year for the world to see and analyze. We look forward to a ribbon cutting at Heartland Film Festival right here in Lawrence later this month, the opening of an excellent new library, and the successful, successful completion of our new fire station number 38 this summer. The groundbreaking of the Keystone Project will happen this summer, as well as the start of a massive end docked project on Pendleton Pike that will make our city very much safer, a safer place to travel. It's a shame that we're gonna start 2023 without that funding for those much-needed projects I described, but as a city administration, all 300-plus City of Lawrence employees, we remain deeply committed to serving our community to the best of our ability, with or without your support, and we're really hoping for it.
Can I ask you a question? What is your job title now?
Well, we're still working with the Human Resources Division on that. I anticipate I will revert to being the Chief of Staff in the City of Lawrence.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know that, could you?
Glad you asked, because I didn't know what to put in the minutes.
No, you said, I asked for comments of the Administration, and then you said you weren't, you know, I didn't know what your title was and representation of the Administration. We appreciate your opportunity to, to, you know, give those words, you guys' deal, and for a lot of those questions that you have, there were a lot of rhetorical questions in your statement, but if they are real questions, I would ask that you submit those to the Council President, to myself, and we'll, we'll make sure that you get clear answers to the actions that we made. This meeting's adjourned.
Oh, we got citizens.
Very soon, citizen comments.
Okay.